I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Welcome to the August 5, 2025 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. While Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. These comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission, and they may cause the Chair to interrupt the Speaker. Such comments will not be consented or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussion and findings for any matter tonight. Thank you. All right. Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to call Commissioner Goldberg, the leadest in the pledge allegiance, please. The new guy.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Pellman.
Here.
Vice Chair Bush.
Here.
Chair Thienis.
Here.
Commissioner Babinow.
President.
Commissioner Palmer. Commissioner Goldberg.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Now is the time for public comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
We do not appear to have any public comments for items that are not on the agenda.
All righty then. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for the appeal of zoning administration administrator's approval of conditional use permit 25-007. Planning Commissioners, please state your disclosures regarding this item, and we'll start on my right.
Brett Bush and Councilwoman Van der Mark.
You spoke with them?
Yes.
I spoke with city staff, including city attorney and Jennifer Villanueva, or Villa Senor, Mr. Paul, who's the measure L person, and, let's see, and Chris Cole, and Council Member McKean, and myself. Obviously, that was one meeting. And then I spoke at the zoning administration meeting, so there. And then I spoke at the DRB. Well, I didn't speak officially at the DRB, but I did talk to some people there that were on the DRB. And then the only other person I talked with, Commissioner Palmer, and Commissioner Thienis, Chair, and also Councilmember Williams. And that would be it. Thank you.
I know. Mine's much shorter. I talked to Dominic McGee and Councilman Chad Williams.
And I spoke to Commissioner Pellman, Commissioner Babinow, Mayor Burns, and Council, no, Mayor Protem McKean, and staff.
I spoke with Chair Thienis and Councilman Butch Twining.
Palmer?
I spoke with Commissioner Pellman, Councilmembers Casey McKean, Chad Williams, and Don Kennedy, and Parks and Community Services Commissioner Jeanne Perez.
I spoke with Vice Mayor McKean, and I don't even remember who else I spoke with, but I did speak with one other. I might have spoken to, nope, that was it. I think that's the only.
Okay. All right, staff, may we please have a staff report on this item?
Yes, Associate Planner Marco Quevus will be giving the presentation.
Yes, good evening, Chair Thienis and planning Commissioners. The item before you is the appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of condition use permit number 25-007. It's a Huntington Beach sports complex located at 18260 Golden West Street. The request is sales, service, and consumption of beer and wine. It's an ABC Type 41 license within a proposed approximately 5,200 square foot outdoor dining area for an eating and drinking establishment with full table service at the Huntington Beach Sports Complex. The subject site has a general plan designation of OSP, which is Open Space Park, and is zoned OSPR, which is Open Space Parks and Recreation Subdistrict. The site is located on the east side of Golden West Street between Talbot Avenue and Ellis Avenue with the outdoor dining patio facing existing baseball fields two and three, with the closest residences located over 450 feet to the south. Here on the slide, you could see the aerial map showing the subject site along Golden West, and the, this is a close-up of the actual eating and drinking establishment that's within that park area there. So as far as the site plan, the site plan is, for this location, is on Golden West, and it's approximately 5,200 square feet, which includes an enclosed patio with table service and includes a 48-inch-high barrier fencing with restrooms accessible from outside of the dining area. So here at this, on this slide, you can see the extent of the outdoor dining area with the perimeter fencing and the barriers that are placed in there as well for the 42-inch-high The zoning administrator approved CUP 25-007 with conditions at the meeting on July 16, 2025, and was able to make certain findings. Those include police department conditions regulating alcohol sales and service, the condition for full table service in which guests will be served food and beverage at their tables, and that alcohol is ancillary to eating and drinking establishment. As far as the site and layout, the fencing is conditioned to prevent passing of alcoholic beverages through the barrier, and that the plan is revised to provide restroom access to the public. Subsequently, an appeal was filed by Commissioner Pellman on July 23, 2025, and the concerns cited for the appeal were that the new plans were received on the hearing date, that's the zoning administrator hearing date, and that the public questions were not addressed to the applicant's satisfaction. On this slide, we show the site plan comparison. So the image, the slide image to the left shows the plan that was initially submitted in April 10, 2025, and the plan to the right is the revised plan that was shown at the zoning administrator hearing. As you can see with the areas that are clouded in the red there, in this area there, those show the revisions, which were recommended by the design review board, and which would include that the fence barrier be included that would prevent unintentional entry into the patio dining area and allow for independent access to the restrooms. And so once again, the areas that are clouded here in the red, these two sections are the areas that were revised on the plan to comply with those recommendations. This next slide shows the renderings of the proposed outdoor dining area, which represent the general look and feel of the proposed outdoor dining, outdoor patio area, and the So should the planning commission approve the proposed project? It may do so based on suggested findings and conditions of approval, that the project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, that it provides an enhanced amenity within the Huntington Beach Sports Complex, that the use is ancillary to existing eating and drinking establishment and the Huntington Beach Sports Complex, and that the conditions of approval have been incorporated to ensure safe, ensure safe service of beer and wine and compliance with all applicable laws and regulations. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question, and we'll point out that the applicant is in the audience as well.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? I'd like to start on my right.
Do you have anything? No? All right. I'll do it.
Okay.
Go first. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Commissioner Pellman, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, could you back, go back to the renderings and the site plan? Okay. So it doesn't really show the tot playground. Where is it?
Let's see. So the, so I remember the tot lot, or I should say the playground area was to the, I believe it's to the left of this.
Go to your vicinity map.
Go here.
I think it shows it on the vicinity map.
There we go. So on this location, yeah, so you would see that the lot would be, let me, if I can get the cursor there, it would be this, this area here, just immediately to the, I'm going to say to the left of the establishment, which would be this area here on the close-up image.
And could you describe the barrier there? And was it child-friendly and all that stuff for safety purposes?
So the proposed barrier would be 40 inches tall. It's a basically wrought iron fence with railings in between. It's kind of like a aircraft wire railing that is spaced close enough together to prevent drinks from being passed through the fence itself.
So is it safe for children? Can they climb over it? That was my concern presented at the zoning administration meeting.
I guess there's a potential for our kids to climb over it, but I guess we would rely on staff running the business to preventative measures, place signs and so forth, so that, you know, children would be discouraged from climbing, you know, basically the railing on that fence.
I have two, I have eight grandchildren. Two of them are toddlers, and I guarantee you, with what you described, they would be climbing on it, putting their arms through it, all of that. And that was a concern that I understood that was going to be addressed before this meeting. At least that was my understanding. Maybe I was wrong, but...
Commissioner Pellman?
Yes.
This is Jill. We did check with the building official and building staff, and they're a safety issue from a building code perspective. So with regards to that question, we checked just from a building code perspective, and they did not see the proposed material as an issue.
Okay. I'm done then.
Yep.
I just have one question. This is within the confines of the park, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other establishments in the park that we serve alcohol?
Not at this location, no.
Anywhere in Central Park?
There might be, I think, a restaurant that has alcohol, I think, that initiated the text amendment that led to the provisions that were, that were applying.
Yeah, so, so serving alcohol in this zoning area is allowed as long as you follow the zoning requirement for table service?
Correct. Yeah. CUP is required for alcohol use, and it requires full table service.
Okay.
I'd like to address that. My understanding is Measure C, which is Section 612, basically had an exception for entities that were built in Central Park prior to 1990. I think it might have been like January 1, 1989. And I believe Kathy Mays was there, and one of the stipulations is that you have to have the full-service dine-in there before you get the CUP. And so that provision that you're describing with Kathy Mays, in 2018, there was a letter by Fred Wilson, who was the city manager at the time, and he basically put that stipulation into place in a code. And so that's what I believe you're referring to, in my opinion.
Commissioner Pellman, speaking on Section 612, the city attorney office does do an analysis for almost every product that comes through. We have done this one. We don't think it even gets to the exception that you're speaking about, about the existing use. Measure C is designed to come into effect when something is sold, leased, exchanged, or disposed of. That's not the case here. All that's being done here is a permitting process for alcohol. Measure C doesn't really consider the specific use that closely. And then beyond that, I haven't seen evidence that the building is going beyond the existing footprint of the current building, and in that case, it wouldn't activate Measure C either.
In my opinion, there was an attorney opinion in 98 that would refute your opinion, so I respectfully disagree.
That is fine. Section 309, the city attorney powers of the charter states that the current city attorney shall have the power to provide advice related to compliance of the city charter. So it's the current city attorney's office, who I have reviewed all the hundreds of Measure C opinions we've written, and written 16 of them myself. We think that this does not activate the Measure C requirements for a vote.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions?
Yes. A couple of questions. I'm actually painfully familiar with a similar request about 20 years ago when I was active in another city close by. So the ABC has already signed off on this, is that correct?
Can you repeat that question?
The ABC, they've complied with ABC requirements?
ABC has not signed off on this requirement yet. So what they need is an approval by the planning commission. Well, yes, the planning commission, and then from there, they will review this item as well.
Okay. And the police department, have they come in and said anything about this in particular?
They have reviewed this project, and their recommendations have been incorporated in the conditions of approval for this item.
Okay. On that, for...
Commissioner Babinow?
I thought I heard that the barrier was 48 inches, and then I thought I just heard 40 inches. So can I get a clarification?
So the barrier's supposed to be 48 inches tall.
Okay. And what is the distance to the kiddie park, I guess, for lack of a better term? How far away is that in feet or...
It's, let's see. I didn't do a direct measurement. I would say about, maybe about 2, about 150 to 200 feet away.
Okay. Nothing further from me.
Commissioner Palmer?
Yes? Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
Yes. It's on, right? Yeah. Yes, I would agree with Commissioner Pellman. It does not look to me like this is fully vetted, even though our legal department says it seems to be, but everything I read specifically called out two only establishments, and the requirement was they had to have been in existence at the time of the application. And so they had to already be full service. So it's, there's a little bit of gray area there. The lease also is only for concessions, Dan, so I don't know about the lease itself. Someone else might want to look into that. Again, to me, it's, there's a little gray area there. There was an awful lot of consternation with Measure C, so I don't know that there's enough in these documents to really make me comfortable that we have vetted this fully through. However, I understand that it's popular with some people, so I've reviewed it fully. One of the questions I have, was there any stipulation for hours of operation for serving alcohol itself? Because to me, that would kind of make or break it. And my recommendation would be 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., the way they do at Lake Forest, I'm sorry, at Norco Silver Lakes Sport Complex, where they have service all day for food, but for alcohol, it's 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. So if you could comment on that.
And I'm currently reviewing the conditions of approval. I know that we have hours that are stated for when alcohol beverages are not supposed to be served, and where it states condition number 26, no dining or consumption of alcoholic beverages shall be permitted in the outdoor patio dining areas between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m.'s a little early to start serving alcohol, in my opinion.
Understood. It's probably a little early for most people. Yes, it is. But yeah, that is, that was a police department recommendation.
Just to chime in, since I've attended, I don't know how many of these fields that are privately ran all over the entire state, actually. Most of them allow alcohol sales before 4:00 p.m. This one you're referring to may in fact have that 4:00 p.m. But again, my kids grew up playing baseball and softball, and I was at all those parks, and they served alcohol pretty much, you know, on the Saturdays and Sundays, you know, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, or whatever, so.
I have contacted seven parks, and of those, you're correct. Five of them do serve alcohol, but only four of them serve during midday hours. And it was just a stipulation that I thought would help alleviate the concerns that some of us have for alcohol consumption during a long day of tournament games.
If we could just keep our questions to staff for right now, then we'll deliberate about in a minute.
Yep. Sorry. If I could add to the questions about the hours, the hours, so the operator does have certain hours of operation that they go by. I believe this location on Golden West, their hours are 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. generally. And I'm reading here, let's see, they could be also, it also depends on the day and of course events, but, so they can vary as far as hours are concerned. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sundays, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., 8:00 p.m. So, but the applicant can confirm their hours as well for this location.
Commissioner Pellman, question?
More of a comment. I want to back up to the tot lot playground. It's not 150 feet. I would say from the front of where the windows are, it's maybe 20 feet, and the perimeter barrier on the one side is to prevent the kids from going into where they're serving alcohol. So that is, and it's an estimation, 15 to 20 feet, but, so it's not 150 feet, the tot lot. So just for clarification.
Any other questions?
We can have a chance after we hear from the public.
Yep. With no further questions, we will now open the hearing for public comments.
We currently have 13 people signed to speak up. Again, if you are planning on speaking on the item and you've not filled out a public speaker form, please do so and bring it to me. Most everyone signed up for the sports complex, so I will be calling them for both items. Please come down, line up at each podium. Hank Madonna, Rick Brown, Dan Hay, Adlaird, Dion Cronkite, Jean Gooden, Dave Chenault, Diana Phillips, Patricia Pappas, Eric Stein, Eva, Nancy Bukos. And apologies if I mispronounced anyone's name. Thank you.
Just, just to be clear, we are taking public comments for both items, 25-07 and... Just to be clear, we are taking public comments for both items, 2507 and 2514, at the same time, because they're basically the same. Can we do that?
It would, because of the way that it was agendized, we are doing two separate items. So they will come back if they want to speak again for the second item.
Okay, sorry about that.
Hello, my name's Hank, longtime resident here. Children grew up here in Huntington Beach. And this is just the most ridiculous thing I've heard in a long time. You know, all the emotions of the kids playing all day and adding alcohol to it, there's going to be a possibility of some parent getting arrested, and all the people, all the children watching this. And the effect that that's going to have on people, who's going to monitor how many beers you give in an eight-hour day? All these things are just, really? We can't find anything better to make a profit in the complex? Anything better than have, they didn't even do their homework. They don't even know how far the kids are playing from, that's absurd. Please do your homework completely for some of the parents. My kids are grown up, but a whole bunch of this community, a whole bunch of my friends' kids are playing softball, are playing soccer on these fields. And it's just ridiculous. So please, are we trusting you? You guys do a great job in this city. Please really think of this really heavily for the children, the ones that have a safe place to go, because maybe there's too much drinking at homes to start with. That's all I have, and thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, commissioners. First off, I want to share my opposition to the proposal allowing the sale of alcohol in Huntington Beach Sports Complex.
Can you please state your name? Can you please state your name?
Oh, sorry, Rick Brown. This facility is a crown jewel of Huntington Beach, welcoming over 1 million visitors annually, and the vast majority of whom are children, young athletes, families, and community, and, and, community spectators, sorry. The proposed introduction of alcohol sales at this family-centered venue raises serious concerns related to public safety, youth development, traffic management, and overall character of our community. I have the following concerns. First off, family-friendly environment. The sports complex is one of the few remaining public spaces in Huntington where families can enjoy sports, recreation, and community events in a safe and sober environment. Introducing alcohol into this space compromises very values that have made it so successful from a sportsmanship, youth development, health, and community unity perspective. As far as public safety and liability, alcohol consumption, even when regulated, can escalate tensions in competitive sports environments, especially among spectators. And oftentimes, you'll see fathers upset about the calls the umpires make, or kids playing too rough, they get elbows or knees, that's problems. And this increases the risk of alterations, and also impairs judgment, DUIs, and medical emergencies, all of which place a heavier burden on public safety personnel, staff, and city resources. As far as traffic and parking is concerned, the sport complex already experiences significant traffic and congestion during the major events. The introduction of alcohol could lead to impaired drivers leaving the venue, increasing the risk of traffic accidents on city streets and residential areas adjacent to the complex. As far as setting precedents, approval of the alcohol sales at the sports complex would set a dangerous precedence that could be cited by other residential and recreational youth-focused facilities seeking similar permissions. This incremental shift would slowly erode the protection to keep our family values safe, accessible, and focused on healthy community-first values. Lastly, the Huntington Beach Sports Complex is just not, just not a venue, it's a community asset. It represents the values we uphold as far as wellness, youth achievement, and family togetherness. Allowing alcohol sales at this location is incompatible with those values and unnecessary for continued success of the complex. I respectfully urge the Planning Commission to reject any proposal that permits the sale of alcohol at the Huntington Beach Sports Complex, and instead recommit to the policies that prioritize family, safety, and responsible community development. Thank you for your time and your dedication for preserving the spirit of Huntington Beach.
As a reminder, please state your name prior to your, to speaking. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Billy Maddox, volunteer in Huntington Beach for over 40 years as an official baseball and soccer. And I've watched and had altercations, just as this gentleman just got through saying, with a dad whose son was called out, who got angry, and actually had to be removed from the field. It's happened several times. We've had to shut down games, we've had to turn kids away. There are so many places to go drink. You can drink at home, you can drink at any bar. There's no reason to open this sports venue where we're trying to teach the children the benefit of life, you know? Be prepared for the play, know what you're going to do when it happens, execute. If you fail, it's okay. But your dad in the audience thinks you're going to get signed to the professional league tomorrow, he's going to have issue with it. A lot of the dads, we ask to stay out into the left field so that they don't disrupt the rest of the crowd, okay? As an official, I'm here to tell you that we put up with this. We deal with this all the time on a non-alcoholic basis, with sober people. So there's no reason to bring alcohol here. If I could think of a good reason, maybe, but there's so many other places that this can happen. Everybody gets together and eats at Joe's afterwards and has a beer. Why do we need to do it at the field, okay? It's not a good thing. There's nothing that alcohol cannot make worse, not one thing. I've seen it wreck so many lives. And why introduce the children to that when they're trying their best, they're giving all of their effort, they've practiced so hard, they've had all the gear, they've worked their tail off, the soccer, the baseball, the men's softball, even worse. When, those guys, they think they're professionals, and they argue about a call at first base, okay? So now give them a beer? I just think it's a bad idea. Let's keep Huntington Beach going in the direction it's going. I love the way you guys have been doing things, I love the way Huntington Beach has been a leader in strong conservative values, and I think that this is a place to draw the line. We just don't need it. If we needed it, that'd be different. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, my name is Ed Laird. I'm a former Planning Commissioner when this town was called Gospel Swamps. Not really, but that's how far I go back. First of all, I'm here tonight to oppose alcohol in the sports complex, and I'd like to thank Tracy Pellman for bringing this forward and appealing it. I think that she caught a big mistake. I think that more homework should have been done before this went through as it did. I think Measure C and Measure L have standing here, and I think the intent of those both would circumvent any legal situation that you might be able to twist it today. So I have been in Huntington Beach for 60 years, and I think that, I kind of lost my place here. I think that we should not have alcohol in the sports complex. I'm not a teetotaler or anything like that, but I think that it's, it's for our youth, and it was intended for our youth when it became the sports complex. And when we first put the sports complex in, the staff, they went ahead and issued a contract to a company online that didn't exist, and we lost a million one in that. You can look that up and see where we lost money when we first started out, because they didn't do their homework, and I don't think they've done their homework here. Another friend of mine here tonight that was going to speak is Kevin Elliott, who owns Code Four here in town, and he owns the airshow. And Kevin is more articulate than I am, and I'd like to read his remarks, because he's homesick with the virus, with his family, his whole family's sick. So if I could read, this is from Kevin Elliott, he's much more articulate than I am. Do we really need to serve alcohol in the youth sports complex? That's a question. If the purpose here is to allow alcohol consumption during future concert events at the complex, a temporary license can be obtained, as with other annual events such as the U.S. Open and the airshow, and et cetera. The HB Council spent significant time and treasure arguing for measures A and B just recently, and we needed to let our kids be kids. Normalizing alcohol consumption around impressionable youth creates the impression inappropriate atmosphere, one that Kevin does not believe that we should, that we stood for in our city. In 1996, the people voted the Measure L and approved a youth sports complex with a snack bar, not a sports bar. If Planning Commission disagrees and thinks, oops, my time's up.
Yep, please wrap it up.
But Kevin is opposed to it also, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Patricia Pappas, over 45-year resident. And honorable Planning Commissioners, I'm here to speak to you about the 1909 craft beer and concession proposal at the HB Sports Complex. I was reviewing the complex's website, and we're already advertising that already, "Come and grab an ice-cold local brew, craft beer and concession." So we're already advertising that it's up and running. I thought that was interesting. And I'm here to talk to you about two issues. I was looking at our municipal code. Being a teacher, I do a lot of, a lot of research, and I don't know if this applies, but it says in the municipal code, the city code, 13-48-110, alcoholic beverages, "No person shall, within the boundaries of any public park within the city, consume any alcoholic beverage of any kind whatsoever, except when attending a function operating under an alcohol permit issued in accordance with Chapter 9.84 of this code." So I'm thinking, well, maybe that is like the taste, where they would have alcohol, I don't know. But it says, "No person." And then I'm looking at, I'm looking at the charter, and I'm looking at 612, Public Utilities and Parks and Beaches. And it talks about to have things built, or I don't know if this is going to be sold or leased or exchanged or otherwise transferred, I don't know who's going to own this, if the city's going to own this, I have no idea. But you need the majority of the council to approve it, and you need an affirmative vote by the electors. So it needs to go to an election. And so there will be some costs there. And, and then I was looking at another document, I've looked at a lot of documents. Measure C says, and this is the ballot Measure L, and it says, "This amendment also updates Measure C so that we can continue to improve our parks and beaches with minor updates, including adding, upgrading restrooms without a costly citywide vote to do so." It's so, to me, it says, "We need a citywide vote to do this." So, I don't know. But thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Jim Easton. I've lived in this city for over 30 years. This is very personal to me. In 2011, I was almost killed by a drunk driver on a motorcycle. I was on the motorcycle, I got hit by a drunk driver, he was a Marine. He was 18 years old, it wasn't in the city here. But the point is, drinking is very personal. I have not drank at all since that incident. And I also have family members that are on this department, in the Police Department, that are working in the DUI area, so I, very family-connected with this. And I think alcohol, in general, anybody that's lived in this city for a while knows that Huntington Beach has a reputation throughout the state of being people, too many people drinking, and mixing children with drinking. I always thought that we, as the adults, are supposed to be the role models for our kids. So being a good role model is not drinking at their sports games, anything they're doing, we're going to be drinking on the playgrounds, the little parks around the city. This is crazy to mix alcohol. Nothing good comes from drinking alcohol and being around children. In fact, recently, I live across the street from Sea Cliff, just down the street here, and there's been a problem for the last several years with drunk high school kids coming out in the, after the football games. So drinking and use is already a problem, so we as parents need to be better examples and show our kids that that's not the way to go. So I encourage an absolute no on this, there's no place for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker, please.
My name is Jeanne Gooden, and I'm here this evening to, to tell you that I'm a recipient of an alcoholic father who was unable to take care of his actions while in the family and also in the public. So I'm here to encourage you to oppose the alcohol consumption at the Huntington Beach Sports Complex, Youth Sports Complex, that is situated on Golden West Boulevard. Presently, it has a family-friendly environment where children are pleasant, and I like that this atmosphere will continue. This is a fair, there are fairly large and consistent literature that's available that illustrates the detrimental use of liquor in public on children. The American Addiction Centers report that alcohol misuse can destroy family relationships and drive a wedge between its members, not to mention the non-protection of children present. And these can also cause fights and otherwise impair the health and happiness of people. So please, vote to protect our children and others that are involved, and vote against this Huntington Beach Commission vote for the sports complex. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Diana Phillips. I am a 21-year resident of Huntington Beach. When I heard that you wanted to sell alcohol, you know, close to where the kids are playing, the impact of children seeing their parents drunk, under the influence, acting irresponsible, the problem with alcohol and parents is that they're not the same person. And they react to, like they said, people making calls, and then they start fights. And these kids, in seeing their parents blow a gasket with another person, or have some kind of fight, that it's going to impact their brains forever in their lifetime. You know, just one little fight. What we're doing is, we are promoting alcohol. We are telling, I mean, I know that Huntington Beach is number one in DUI arrests in the state. But we don't want to teach our children to become alcoholics. We don't want the parent with the hangover saying, "Oh, God, here we go, here's another beer." And then how, who's going to say, you know, "Can't have two, three, four"? Who's, you know, these children, you know, walking around, just walking around the area, you know? People, you know, parents are going to be under the influence and going to accidentally hit somebody. You're asking for liability that's just beyond recognition. I mean, this is just the craziest idea. I mean, we're trying to make a family-friendly world. We're not trying to make money, we're trying to raise children that will become good human beings. We don't want to raise alcoholics. It's just, I mean, what, what, do we want to sell marijuana, doobies, or something like that, too? I mean, seriously, that's legal? You could do that? This is just, we, we need to be adults here. We need to take the, the idea, we are adults. You know, we shouldn't allow this at a youth sports complex. It's just wrong. It's just wrong on all levels. Doesn't matter, you know? We don't want our children to be brought up that way. We don't want them to have the repercussions of the dad blowing, you know, getting into a fight with somebody else over a call. So, you know, it just, the repercussions to just, the child is unbearable, and we have to think about these things. We haven't thought of it all through. We're just thinking about the almighty dollar. But it's, no, we want to have a good, happy, family-friendly environment. We don't want to have, you know, kids being hit by parents under the influence.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Dion Cronkite, longtime resident of Huntington Beach. And when I saw Huntington Beach Sports Complex, I thought, how wonderful, families and children can get together, and then I see the snack bar now wants to start serving beer and wine. And I think even you- And I think even USC don't, doesn't sell alcohol in the stands anymore because it's just too problematic. The sports center is an area that's designed for family growth. And they're not going to get it if, if a child is watching, even, even an older brother possibly drinking while he's eating a hot dog at the snack bar. He's going to think that's okay. Then he sees his coach having some beers and some wine. And, and you can't just, you know, have children go into that with all of the distractions that they have nowadays, anyway. I think it's smoke-friendly and alcohol-friendly should be a sports, a sports complex. This is a chance for Huntington Beach to find a place that's safe for our children to play, their families can be involved, the school can be involved. They can, you know, just have a meeting place. They can have a snack bar with good food and soft drinks. That's a little sugary, but still, they can go work it off at the complex. So I think no, no alcohol. We have enough restaurants that serve alcohol in that area. If they want to go after they pick their kids up, have a meal with their kids and have their alcohol there and go home. But I wouldn't bet that families that have kids at the complex and are drinking and eating would go home just when they're ready to because the alcohol would be there, and that's what would kind of encourage everyone to stay. So then the snack bar becomes a restaurant. Suppose the restaurant wants to, doesn't make it with the food that it has and to get the food a little bit higher so we get a little bit more customers in. Is it going to be open to the public, that they can come anytime during that period of wine and, and drinking, that they can come and eat and watch kids play? So I say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please line up at each podium, and remember to state your name prior to speaking. Thank you.
Eva, from Huntington Beach. I used to work for UCLA Police Department, Occupational Health and Safety Education, the whole hospital for health and safety. Had two licenses in my life, optical license and traveling not to republic. Alcohol is a problem. If you want to make problem, it's all going to be problems. So nothing but problems. Even the COVID times, the only thing that's open is bars, money, money, money. It's, you know, we have to follow the law. Don't drink and drive. I tell everybody, "Don't drink and drive." You have to follow the law. And you have to teach the children to follow the law, not to break the law. And that's danger for them to be there watching you. Even if you don't tell them anything, they're watching you. We need to protect the future of our government, of our nation, and those are our children. Need to protect them. Don't drink and drive. It's not worth it. It's not worth it. Drink and go to sleep. That's it. Just before you go to bed. And God bless you all. We pray for our nation and protection over all of you, in Jesus' name.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Eric Stein, 40-year resident. Yeah, I'm 40. Okay, Ed said something here, impressionable youth. That really stuck out to me. When I was a kid, my family drank. Birthdays, holidays, sporting events. It was, it was a big part of our life, and it became a big part of my life. Let's just say that. It has, it has been the source of the most pain and suffering in my life. And, I mean, I have, I have friends and family that have drank themselves to death. Okay? So what I would, what I want to impress here is that the kids don't need more. We got plenty of places we can go have a drink. Right? Plenty. The kids don't need anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Nancy Bukos. I'm a 48-year resident of Huntington Beach. And I'm a former president of the South Huntington Beach Girls Fast Pitch Softball League about 10 years ago. But we did have over 500 kids when I was there. And I can tell you right now, in the words of our current president, I'll see if I can do him justice, this is going to be a disaster, a big disaster. Make no mistake, alcohol with 8-and-under parents, alcohol with anybody, any coach, anyone who has a problem with alcohol is going to be abused. You could tell me that we can monitor it, but I'm going to say, "How?" Because we can't even monitor to our parking at some of the places that, like Myadis and Community Center where we're at, and we fight all, all day long because we have parking infractions, and we can't get police to monitor that. So, guys, this is a no-brainer. I, I didn't plan on coming tonight, but it came to my attention earlier today. And, you know, I've watched countless kids, as my kids grew up, going through all the schools in the school district. How many kids die from alcohol? Alcohol is bad. We should not be sending a mixed message to anyone that, playing on the playground, mom and dad are going to sit over here and have a beer and watch you through the, through the, through the fence. Guys, this is an easy one. All you got to do is remember that our job is to do what's best for the community, and your job is to uphold the law and to listen to the constituents that, you know, we're all in this together. We have to be smart, and we have to make common sense decisions. And the almighty dollar does not have to come before our kids. So I urge you to say no to this. And let's leave the bars on Main Street. There's plenty of them five minutes down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. First, I'd like to thank Tracy for bringing this to our attention here and keeping it on the radar. My name is Dan Hay. I am the president and the CEO of Huntington Beach-based Premier Girls Fast Pitch, Inc. On Sunday, we just concluded the 17-day PGF National Championships would generate over $130 million in economic impact to Orange County and Huntington Beach. We had over 620 teams competing in a top-level female youth fast pitch softball tournament, ranging ages 10-and-under through 18-and-under. These teams arrived here from every corner of the United States and have been roaming Main Street, Huntington Beach for the last 17 days, eating in our restaurants and spending money. And we televised these championship games on ESPN. I also hold eight other fast pitch event, events at this complex during the course of the year, and I've held events on just about every complex in Orange County, Inland Empire, and Northern San Diego over the last 25 years. I'm also, by the way, the head coach at Marina High School Softball, and we just won a CIF championship. I had to get that in there. Yay! I, I am here to express my great concern over the serving of alcohol at the Huntington Beach Sports Complex. When passing Measure C and Measure L many years ago, there was never any intention of turning the sports complex into an alcoholic sports bar. Alcohol has no place around young, competitive children, parents, umpires, and guests. Parents get too competitive and then get stupid, to be quite frank about it. I've seen it time and time again over the years. It's a bad look when parents and coaches can't control their emotions around kids during and after games. But then you're going to throw alcohol into the mix? Are you kidding me? This is just flat-out lack of common sense, a bad decision. On top of that, these parents, coaches, and guests are now getting into their cars after drinking at the fields and driving their children back home to all parts of Southern California. I don't think we want that kind of blood on our hands as a community or as a city. If someone is injured in a car accident due to the alcohol, due to the alcohol being served at the complex. This is no different than giving liquor permits to establishments located next to elementary schools. In this case, people would be consuming alcohol within 50 to 60 feet of the children's playground and adjacent to our youth athletic fields. The complex was never designed nor voted into law to hold Live Nation concerts or any other types of concerts on the premises. It was built and approved by our citizens to hold sporting events and to serve our community. Our citizens approved Measure C with the intention to provide sports recreation, not intoxication. Please vote no and stop this nonsense for the sake of our young athletes and their families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Hi, I'm Dave Chenault. I do have a presentation I wanted to give quickly. And I also wanted to say, while it's coming up, I wanted to thank Marco. He's been very helpful. And I wanted to thank Commissioner Pelman for bringing this up and calling it out as something that needs a closer look. So they're going to bring this up. But the basic idea is this, you guys have a vote in front of you, and a lot of people tonight have called for you not to approve this at all. This presentation is going to take a slightly different approach that if you did approve it, I'd like to see you add additional conditions to the cup. So if you just scroll forward, if you, I don't, I'm sure how you do this, but if you could just scroll it somehow. There you go. So I'm here because if you just do this, I'm very concerned about the liability to the city. So if this goes bad, if this goes off the rails, the person they're going to look for is the deepest pockets, us, the taxpayers. So there's only two ways to deal with this. You can either mitigate it, or you can eliminate it. These guys have been asking you not to allow this. But if you did allow it, a strong cup with strong enforcement is the way to help mitigate that. So if you look at the lease concessions, this is what the city gets from these leases. We get $2,000 a month, or 8% of the gross sales the first year and down the line. These are the revenues that we've received the beginning of this year from the one concession that's open without any alcohol. Okay, so we're averaging about $36,000 to $42,000 a month in the one concession that's open that has no alcohol. And the city's receiving $2,800 to $3,300 a month. Next slide. So just real quick, if you just keep going, because I'm on limited time, I'm asking for seven different new conditions. The first one is, there is a lot of gray around what is a full-service restaurant. When this was asked during the cup hearing, no one could define it. So I'd like you guys to add a definition in the cup provisions that says, "What is full service?" I think that's reasonable. The second is, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but there is no security right now at the, at the sports complex, period. There was Huntington Beach Central Park Rangers, but that was privately funded, and that group's no longer with us. So there is no security. Now, the, the guys at the concession have committed to adding security. I'd like to see concession at each of these concessions to have a security guard that's got a uniform. And I'd like to see two in the complex that are out there looking for infractions and keeping things sane. I'd like to have the barriers be solid. I don't want to have kids climbing on these because when there's no restaurant open, the kids will be on these wires. And this is a security issue for the city and a risk to the kids. The enforcement is a big issue right now. I'm going to talk about that in a minute. But the only way to enforce this cup is to make a complaint to, to the code enforcement team. The code enforcement team works very hard. They have five people on their staff. There's presently 1,000 open code enforcement infractions in the city. A thousand.
I'll give you two more minutes, please. Continue.
I'd like to have them do consumption at the table. So when they order, they can't walk around the restaurant. It's a bar. It's not what this is. This is a full-service restaurant. I've never been to a full-service restaurant where I order a meal, order a drink, and start walking around the restaurant. Right now, the drinking fountains are broken. Three of the eight work. One of the drinking fountains on the Golden West side is inside the area they're going to wall off. I'd like to have them add in drinking fountains for the kids and fix the ones that are broken. And last, I'd like to have an access corridor added to these concessions. Right now, the way it's laid out, the kids have to walk through the full-service restaurant to get to these self-service windows. So just really quickly, I've just got very short time. I just want you to scroll up, please, to the next slide, other way. Yeah. So I just want to, next slide, please. So these are the kind of things I'd like to see them. There's a definition here. And it's not going to be owner's security. It's more to keep order and to keep, make sure that they're meeting their cup provisions. Next slide. So this is what was said at the cup hearing. This was said by the gentleman that's in charge of the beverage services there, and I'm paraphrasing. I listened to the recording. So if this is slightly off, I apologize. But he says, "They definitely plan on having actual security there on top of having our staff certified. We will make sure we have security on staff monitoring exits and entrances to make sure people aren't taking stuff off-site. And you cannot consume alcohol outside the perimeter." That being said, most places that are beer and wine-full service restaurants do not have dedicated security, but we are willing to do this as a sign of good faith." So they've committed to do it. Put it in the cup. Real quick, I have about 30 seconds. Just keep scrolling, please. I just want to get to the last one. Keep going, keep going. Right there. So code enforcement, this is the only way to enforce it. 980 active cases with five code staff. They have staff out on medical leave. Do you, we have 1,000 open cases right now. That's the only way to enforce this. How are we going to enforce this? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers?
We have no one signed, no one else signed up to speak.
Okay, there are no more speakers, and we'll close the public and planning.
Chair, I'm sorry. One second. Is it, you said the owner was in, was here? Is the owner here? The, I'm sorry, the applicant, is he here? Before we close the hearing, would we, can we, do we want to hear from? I'd want to hear, I want to hear from the, from the applicant, quite frankly. Because I just heard these suggested proposals. I'd like to hear his thoughts on it and what's going on.
Well, I thought during the deliberation, we would include the applicant and, and then ask questions of the staff. We would, you know. Even the appellant, I think, during, during discussion.
Is our leasee here with the, can you make a presentation, please? Or the applicant?
Applicant is present.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Jerry Marchbank, I'm one of the partners with Huntington Beach Sports Complex, or HBSC Partners. We operate the Huntington Beach Sports Complex. We have been operating the facility for the last several years. We're really proud of the fact that we're booked 50,000 a year. We've really done a lot of work. We've made a lot of capital improvements. We've done a lot of work to improve the facility. One of the common things that we hear from folks visiting is, "Why aren't you serving alcohol like the other parks that were mentioned earlier?" Is that going to happen? So this is one of the things that, you know, feedback from, from our community, the folks that use the, use the facility, is exactly that. So as we were talking about sort of the next evolution of this park with food and beverage, we've taken over the food and beverage component of the, of the facility, and we've really improved the food offerings. And we're now looking at, at doing this as sort of the next evolution of the park. A few things that I wanted to mention. One is, we are absolutely wanting to do this responsibly. We're not trying to look, we don't want drink, drinking doesn't equal drunk, doesn't equal alcoholics, doesn't equal hitting kids. Those are, you know, we don't want any of that stuff. What we are interested in is finding a responsible way to give our customers what they want, which is, which is the ability to have an enclosed patio like you have down at the beach, or maybe to have a beverage while their kids are playing, like over at Chuck E. Cheese. Or maybe like they're doing at any of these other sports complexes. The Mecca of youth sports is Cooperstown, New York. They serve alcohol. What they're, what we're not talking, we don't want, we're not interested. So as we've gone through this design review process and made changes to the design to tighten up the cabling, we've, security came up. So we talked about, talked it over with PD, and PD said, "No, you don't have to have security." And we said, "Well, we want to have security anyways." So as we've gone through this process of developing this project, it's only been with the idea of creating a project that is safe, that allows us to do this responsibly, and allows us to avoid a lot of these issues that have been brought up tonight. So with that said, with me is Louis Palmer, and he's our director of food and beverage. He certainly knows, and he's been in the restaurant industry for decades, 20-something years. Opened a number of restaurants across, across the county. And, and he can certainly speak to the specifics of restaurant operations and how we control alcohol consumption with, with training of staff, with all of those types of things, security and all of those specific measures if you have questions specifically about that.
Okay, well, we'll come back to you, so don't go far. We have questions for you, I'm sure. We have questions for you, I'm sure, during our deliberation. So now I can say there are no more speakers?
No.
No? Okay. If there are no more speakers, we're going to now close the public hearing. And Commissioners, now we will deliberate this item, and we'll start on my right.
Well, I do want to make one more disclosure. A very prominent person I spoke to about a facet of this, and that was my mom. Today, on the way home from work, I call her every day, and she was just getting into bed, and I said to her, "If alcohol was taken out of the equation of our lives, especially me growing up, how do you think our lives would have been different, knowing that I was going to come in here today?" And she said that she believes that 90% of the trauma that was inflicted would have dissipated, would have been gone. That's one thing. So I have already got a bias against drink around kids. Now, I used to coach sports and referee, and the parents liked to live vicariously through the kids most of the time. I think we all understand that. And I've had some pretty shocking incidents whereby those guys have got to be pulled out. If you add drink into that, I think we have a problem. So I was appointed here by Councilwoman Van der Mark, and the reason why I began to follow her and to support her was her staunch advocate, she was a staunch advocate for children, yeah, and minimizing damage to children. So I start this off with a bias, and I'll admit that. But I think I have a problem with alcohol being served in close proximity to kids in a sports environment that's supposed to be wholesome. Now, we can put as many stipulations together as possible, and we can have, you know, the cops out there, but it doesn't really diminish the fact that people will be over-served, people will be afflicted, you know? Now, I own a small security company, very small security company, and over the past 14 years, we've done many threat assessments, civilian threat assessments. And when we're doing these assessments, the alcoholics in the families usually get the most scrutiny. So one last thing, I know I'm going on about this, but my family was afflicted by many kinds of, let's see, substance use disorders, opioids, benzodiazepine, and alcohol. Alcohol was by far the most dangerous, you know? So I do go into this with a bias, and I don't believe that children's sports and alcohol of any business being side by side. That's my opinion on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Pellman?
Wait, I was joking here. I think I've already said my piece about this, and I remember listening to you at the zoning administrative meeting, so, anyway, thank you.
Commissioner McGee? It's going to be a minute. I asked staff, I have to apologize because I'm still a grom here, trying to figure out the technology. I wasn't able to get all of the things I wanted on a thumb drive to present tonight. But that being said, if we could pull up that Section 612 that I believe we've been talked about a couple times. And that would be in the charter, by the way, the City of Huntington Beach Charter. It was formerly known as Measure C. So if you're confused, Measure C and Charter Section 612 are one and the same. And I just wanted to bring the language up if I could. If not, I can read it into the record if that would help. So I'm going to read it into the record. 612A and B is really the, it says, "No public, no public or park or beach or portion thereof now or hereafter owned or operated by the city shall be sold, leased, exchanged, or otherwise transferred or disposed of unless authorized by alternative votes of at least a majority of the total membership of the City Council and by the affirmative vote of at least a majority of the electors voting on such proposition at a general or special election at which such proposition is submitted." So that's in A. And then B goes on to say that if it's a project over $161,000, that it too should go by the majority of council and a majority vote by the people of Huntington Beach, the citizens. So I heard that we have a legal rendering here that it doesn't apply in this particular case. It's pretty clear in 612, it stipulates it very clearly. And not only that, but there's another section. I mean, Measure L was the implementation or development of the actual, what they used to call a mushroom farm and landfill that made the fields to begin with. So that was Measure L. Then we got Measure C with the 612. And then there's another section I'd like to read, and this is from May of 2018, and it's, again, this is all City of Huntington Beach information, and it's ZTA number 18-001. And I'm just going to read a portion of it. It says, "18-001 includes a provision which limits the service of alcohol only to restaurants with full-table service located within Central Park or in a public-private golf courses," which neither of these are not. Says, "There are two locations in Central Park that are eligible to apply for the conditional use permit as a result of this ZTA-18-001." And that's Kathy Mae's Lakeview Cafe and Park Bench Cafe. And then it goes on to state here, it says, "There are several other types of establishments that do not qualify to apply for a CUP, such as a snack stand, walk-up counters, concession stands, or other similar operations typically found in the sports complex, community parks, little league baseball fields, Friday night lights, flag football, frisbee golf, or the library. These types of services do not meet the prerequisite of being a restaurant with full-table service which precludes them from applying for a CUP." So when I read this, I understand the legal rendering, but it sounds like we went down the wrong road initially to begin with. To me, it sounds like this should have went to council, and this should have went to a vote. I can't vote for this for that legal reason, regardless of the legal rendering. I feel like I'm safeguarding what's pretty clear in the law. And beyond that, just going to a personal level, having been a high school football official for 31 years and doing Pop Warner football for 20 years, having been a baseball coach at Huntington Valley Little League on the board and travel ball down in San Clemente, like one of these places that has a alcohol feature, if that's what you want to call it, every single time, without exception, that I've had an issue, it's always been centered around alcohol. And when I was unaware of what situation I was coming into, and then when I got up on this situation, because I'm always in a position of leadership for whatever reason, it's always alcohol. And so I can't imagine, for the life of me, why revenue would displace everything everybody said in here tonight. Why would revenue be more important than your child at any time? So it's a little infuriating from that point. No takes away my condoning behavior that harms more than the person drinking. Again, these things are not sold at school function. How is it different in this public property? How is it any different with children there? This is a time when the public-private relationship needs to be led by the public, that would be us. No revenue is worth the potential risk of injury or possible death. Guys, you see death around us all the time on these streets. Without alcohol, people drive crazy. Now throw alcohol in there. Now, all of these people coming into our city that aren't familiar with ours, you know, most of these people are coming from out of the city, put our citizens at risk at all times. Whenever you, it's bad enough when they don't know where they're going, and you guys know we're in a tourist destination. How many times do we have to slow down for people that don't know where they're going? Now add alcohol. It says, you know, it's bad form, there's no way to limit the damage to citizen visitors. There's no way to monitor this. There's no way I can vote for this. Commissioner Bevanow?
Okay, so I'll start with the fact that my son started playing baseball at four, and I coached him in T-ball all the way through majors at Huntington Valley Little League. I was on the board there. He went on to play for Huntington Beach High School, and he also went on to play college baseball. None of those places sold alcohol. But every parent that wanted to drink brought their own. So if we think we're going to stop drinking by not selling it, we're, I mean, we're kidding ourselves. I mean, we always knew who was drinking because they weren't in the bleachers, they were sitting, you know, out with their red solo cups in the outfield, right? And I mean, literally, for 18 years, I watched this go on, okay? I'm clean and sober for 28 years, so I have a different perspective, right? Those aren't the people that I chose to hang out with. Alcohol did affect my life, and I get, you know, some of the concerns, right, that were mentioned. When we went to play tournaments like Big League Dreams, they serve alcohol. The Great Park serves alcohol. Huntington Beach High School plays games at the Great Park, and they serve alcohol. So I think, again, we're kidding ourselves, thinking by us not serving it or selling it, that we're going to eliminate all the problems. I just don't think that that's reality, right? The parents are going to bring their ice chests, and they're going to drink, okay? I do like the fact that there's table service, right? So there's not a window where you can go up, you get, you know, two or three beers, and then you go back to the stands, right? You have to sit there and eat. You have to have a meal in an enclosed area where, you know, you can't leave with the drink, right? So I kind of liken it to, I don't know, this might be a bad example, but if you go to longboards, right, you can sit outside on Main Street and you can drink, but you can't leave the premises to go, you know, to take that alcohol with you. So it's, you know, I think it's the use is limited a little bit that way. I guess that's probably all for me. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Palmer?
Okay, so I don't know how many of you have heard the term Semper Gumby, but that would describe my opinion of this project. I initially felt that it was a ridiculous proposition to serve alcohol anywhere near a sports field that had a lot of youth activity. However, I did a lot of research. I contacted seven different facilities. I did not contact San Clemente, I think, was mentioned, but I also, speaking of contacting a family member, I spoke to my sister, who is both a professor of law and a Judge Adleitum.
And I would have to really say that the city attorney is the sole attorney for the city and its appointed officials. Please do not publicly state in a meeting that you're getting legal advice.
I'm not getting legal advice. You didn't let me finish.
I just have to be silent.
Okay. She's a mom, and she is the athletic advisor to the University of Wisconsin Women's Hockey League. They do have in Madison, Wisconsin, a youth hockey and soccer facility, and so I asked her opinion. And she said that initially, they worried about it, but they decided that they would serve beer in the afternoons, I think after 3:00, and that went very, very well. There have not been incidents, and that it's brought in revenue and made more people come. Now they're considering serving whiskey at, okay, they have a local distillery, so if people come there, it would promote that, but only at special times. So, you know, one Friday night a month from 7:00 to 8:00 or something, they would have a tasting. All I'm saying is that what I've learned is that there are a lot of ways to look at this. I could not approve this the way it is now because I think we've overlooked a lot of things, but talking about the conditions that one of the speakers brought up, and then my personal opinion that we need to limit the hours of service, might make it something to consider. So my feeling is it needs to go back to council, and I would probably abstain on a vote on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Listening to fellow Commissioner Bevanow, I feel like we led dual lives as far as our kids and going to all those different tournaments. And I was president of my little league and went to the, all those parks that we're talking about for travel ball, went to Cooperstown, New York, and we came in second, did all that good stuff, and my son played for San Jose State Division. So I've been around it a long time, plus I was a Parks Commissioner for 10 years, so we're very familiar with the parks and the sanctity of the parks. Just like Commissioner Bevanow mentioned, you know, we can go ahead and vote this down and tell these good gentlemen here that are trying to do a responsible way of allowing them to service all these people coming into town, that they can't do that. That's not going to stop the alcohol from being consumed. It's not going to stop a lot of these issues that were brought up that were very emotional, and I appreciate all of that. I'm not a, I still drink, so I'm not as quite a negative on alcohol, but I understand that there's lots of people that have issues with it, and it causes a lot of heartache for a lot of families, so I don't want to sound, you know, unapologetic for those terrible situations for them. But anyway, so in my opinion personally, I just feel as though beer and wine, we're not talking full bar, they're trying to service the people that are coming in. I remember when the City of Long Beach had a 35-year lease for a Big League Dreams field, they were going to be the first one before Europa, and then the citizens came out en masse and said, "No alcohol," and so that project left the City of Long Beach 20 years ago. So, and that meant that all the Long Beach families that have baseball history were all driving out to Europa, Riverside, you name it, but nowhere near California, nowhere near Southern California here that we love on the beach. And so that's what ends up happening, and the revenue went to those cities for hotel rooms and other food, other meals and everything else. So anyway, with that said, the stipulations they brought up, I don't know which ones you got, you said you'd be willing to have security even though it wasn't required, and you mentioned some other things you'd be willing to do. I don't know if there's enough people in this, on this commission, regardless of what provisions you're willing to, but if, without them being in writing, it doesn't matter. So if you say you're going to do something, if we don't put it into the actual deal, it doesn't matter because obviously it's not enforceable. So I don't know if it's worth taking the time to ask them specifically, but I think at least we get one last chance for these gentlemen to tell us what they're willing to do to help mitigate our minds and allow something like this to be approved. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, thank you. I'm in the same opinion. I think people are going to drink regardless. And during the Design Review Committee meeting, you did offer that you were going to provide security. And I thought that, you know, the people who are drinking alcohol at the games, you know, near the field, that will now give you an opportunity to say, "Look, you've got to drink in the bar. You can't drink out on the field. Your security guard can help enforce keeping those parents." And there are just a few, I get it, the Dr. Jekyll, Mr. Hyde drinker that you really just don't want around. I think if we had a security guard that would help enforce those rules... I think if we had a security guard that would help enforce those rules, call the police if they disagree, and keep it to one place where a professional server is making sure that they're not getting intoxicated, I think that, to me, would actually help the problem. I think it wouldn't hurt it. I realize that drinking around children's a problem. People are just going to do it. And if we have a system in place that helps prevent that, I think that's what we can do if we do it right. But the conditions of approval don't include enough provisions. And so Mr. Chanel, well, he wanted full service. I don't know how much more detail we need on that, but if we could add to the approval, a motion with a stronger definition of full service, I mean, it seemed to me like the biggest cost issue here was the security guard. But you already promised that in the Design Review Committee meeting. And if we could just cut and paste that list of proposed conditions, then I think I would be okay with it if you would agree to those conditions. Mr. Chanel, if you can help us bring up your...
Yeah, could we?
Your presentation with the conditions.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So can you go back to my deck?
Hi.
Mark one? Sure. And the conditions are on about the second or third slide. So just keep on going.
Yeah, this one.
So is it okay if I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So the full service, and I... These guys are... I think they're willing to be reasonable, and I think it would be helpful in the cup if you guys would define what full service means so that we all agree on that, because that's an area of fuzz. I know, I remember you said that it's kind of ever-changing, and it would be helpful just to say from your perspective, what is that? So that when the public is there, they would know what that was. The second one is the security, and I think that you've already committed to this, and I think that that was fair on their part. They said they wanted to have a security person at each of the concessions to make sure that the people that are there are going to be conforming to behavior, right? But I'd ask that you guys add a couple people out into the fields, because in the field, you guys know there's people out there drinking. And so if you could have people in the fields to say, "Hey, listen, appreciate you guys being here. Would love to have you consume at our establishment." And let me just walk through, and then I'll sit down. But then, the other thing is on the barriers, initially you guys had solid barriers, treks sighting. And I thought that was a better idea, simply because the second one, which we haven't gotten to yet, is literally like five feet from that tot lot, right? And a lot of people I've seen come in the mornings before you guys would be open. They come out weekdays with their kids, and I'm just very concerned that the kids would get into those aircraft cables and get into situations that would be less than safe for them. The enforcement is something I don't think we can solve today. I think that the code guys do the best they can. They've got a limited staff, and I think it's something that's a more long-term problem that you guys need to think about. Like, if they say all this and they're going to do all this, this is great, but if you can't enforce it, it doesn't mean anything. So we have to come up with a way to take them to task if they're not living up to their side of it. I'm not saying they're not going to, but I'm just saying that right now with 1,000 open, code violations, and less, you know, five staff, that's tough. One thing that I am very concerned about, and this came up at the cup hearing, is that the concept they have is that a person could order with a QR code at the table, they could order alcohol and food, and then they could get up from their table and walk around the restaurant. And I have a tough time with that, because what I see in my mind is the Star Wars bar between games, where you have people that will adhere to the requirement that I've got to order at my table, but then they pack them in, and we've got basically a bar scene. Even though they're a full-service restaurant, if you don't have to consume it at the table, I'm concerned that you're going to have people that sit down or go to the tabletop bars, order, and then pack together, and they're packing in people with lots more people drinking. This, in my opinion, the only reason they're letting people walk around is to shove more people in and make more money. I'm not a fan of that. If they're going to have this, I think they should be sitting down, because it's a full-service restaurant. I've never been to a full-service restaurant that I walk around eating and drinking. And they just fix the fill stations. And the only other thing I'd ask you guys to do, and I think this is reasonable, you guys want to have that, we're going to have a walk-up window for the kids. And I know that my kid played, I was a player agent for Huntington Beach Girl Softball as well, I dealt with all this stuff. But after the games, the kids all congregate, right? They finish their game, and then they go up to snack bar, and they have Red Vines and Big Chew, and they all get together, and they have a good time, right? And right now, the way it's set up, they have to walk through the restaurant to get to that window. And so I just would ask you guys, if you could just make like, in your design, make a way that they could, you know, go under those, the awnings that you guys have set up, the big entranceway, and just give them a pathway to that window that they don't have to go through your restaurant, so they could get their Big Chew, and then they go back out to the fields as fast as they can.
Chairman, this time is really for you guys to ask specific questions, not for them...
All right, we're getting a little too much into the... Okay, so I think one and five, I think five defines one. So if we could just add language that says consumption at table is a definition of full service.
Chair, if I may draw attention, we do have a condition, five and four, related to service at a table and/or the bar top for alcoholic beverages. It's already been identified as a condition of approval, so I think with regards to the service, it's been addressed. It includes consumption. Shall be ordered and delivered to guests by service.
Yeah, it doesn't say consumed at the table, no.
So would you like to, I guess, add the word consumption to those conditions?
And consumption at the table.
Could I add something?
Yeah.
I think there's a picture being painted that this is going to be some type of party bar. Just to paint the picture also, I think everybody's said their credentials. I too am actually a current Little League president in Huntington Beach. I have young children. I have an older child. I've been in youth sports for almost 20 years as well. So I too am very concerned about the youth in our community. That being said, everybody that is going to be patronizing this establishment is going to be bringing their children here, and I don't think that they're going to be here where we're going to be trying to pack them in and make this a bar establishment. They're not going to be there trying to party and meet and mingle. They're going to be there trying to get a bite to eat and possibly a beer or a glass of wine to unwind, have a bite to eat, and go back to their game. And I think that's pretty much going to be the rigmarole of our day-to-day operations, trying to tell people that they have to sit here.
I'm going to, again, have to jump in and say this is really for answering specific questions. Everyone had their chance to give out their best presentation, best before.
Well, I'm just trying to get to the point of trying to say when people are going to consume and where they're going to consume. It's really hard to define.
I'd like to make a motion. Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to deny the request to approve the CUPs for items 25-633 and
I'll second that.
And then we're going to have to have an alternate motion, I believe. Do we vote first? Yeah. Okay.
You need to vote first.
And can I ask for a clarification that if we end up with a 3-3 tie on an abst... abstention, is that the word? If they abstain, then the zoning administrator's determination would carry. Is that true?
Yeah, that decision would stand. It would be, no action taken tonight would be the technical term.
Okay, thank you. So your motion is to deny it as presented?
Correct.
Well, yeah. I guess I'm with that. Okay. Can we have a vote?
Yes, your iPad should work. If not, please let me know. Commissioner, okay. All right, we have four ayes, two noes. Commissioner Thienis and Goldberg voting no. Commissioner Palmer abstaining, motion carries.
Okay. The Planning Commission's action on this item is final unless an appeal is filed to within 10 calendar days. An appeal must include the reasons for the appeal, any required fee, and shall be filed with the city clerk's office within 10 calendar days.
So that's not how I intended to vote.
Yeah, hold on.
I'm sorry, what's wrong? Oh, okay.
That's why it took me so long to read it, because I was confused as to which way...
Okay, so you would wish to change your vote to nay?
Correct.
Okay. So then we have a 3-3, the zoning administrator's action stands.
Okay, and this isn't the final. We can do another motion, I believe, right?
That's correct. You can make no.
Okay, so... We still have... I need some answers, right? So before we do this, so you agree to security?
Yes.
Okay, we agree to security. Solid barriers instead of the aircraft cable?
So on that one, we could do solid barriers. I guess the reason we went originally from solid barriers to aircraft cable was because of the property. It'd be something that people can etch, and then you have graffiti and all of those things. So we went to the cabling.
Okay, and then add the... Do the full service, add to the definition, that would be consumption at the table. Okay.
It wasn't included in the speaker's comments, but my one stipulation was to look at limiting the hours at least noon on. I haven't heard any discussion of that, and that might...
Yeah. Would you agree to limit the hours of operation from noon till 10:00 PM?
Yeah, noon's fine.
Okay.
Fine.
Okay. We got that? Hours of operation for alcohol consumption, noon to 12...
Seven?
10:00 PM?
Till 10:00 on 10 and 8:00, 8:00 on Sundays.
8:00 PM on Sundays?
Typically stopped by 9:00 is the latest we're ever open, typically.
We could just say alcohol service will commence no earlier than noon and terminate by their closing hour.
No later than 10:00.
Yeah, I think PD recommended 10:00.
Yeah, no later than 10:00, but at the conclusion of the last game.
And point of order, because I've dealt with the ABC, which is an agency you never want to deal with directly, but they're going to make sure, they're going to... Because they serve, it's a license that allows them to sell beer and wine, but food has to be served, it has to go with the hours of operation as far as food goes. That's just how the ABC works, so.
Yeah, and food service shall always be maintained during the hours of operation.
It's in there currently.
Yep, okay. And then repair the broken fountains in the park.
Yeah, absolutely. If we haven't put in a work order already, we will. We do have drinking fountains throughout the park.
I don't know that that would be, I mean, that's kind of a sports complex.
Chair, because the request is primarily for the particular concession or the eating and drinking establishment, to extend past that, there isn't really a nexus to do the improvements in the park. But I think as the operator of the park, that would be their responsibility to maintain, not for this particular option.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Commissioner Bevan.
So I like the idea of the kids not having to go through the restaurant. Is it feasible to put like an outside window to get the hot dogs and the Red Vines for the kids? Or do they have to go to the, you know, through the restaurant?
Not, it's not, not... There wouldn't really be a way to add a window. There's four windows currently.
Yeah, well, what we wanted, what we wanted to add, and this is part of the facility, the kids were using the sink that's attached. We want to have an operation sink outside the opening.
There currently is.
Well, you'll have to build one now, because now you've closed it off.
Oh, there's currently two, one on either side of the building. One would be inside.
Okay, ensure there's a working sink directly outside.
That's correct. On each building, there are two sinks. One of them will be within their enclosed patio area, and the other one is directly across on the other side of the building.
Okay.
And there are functional drinking fountains inside and outside the service area.
And then, okay. Yeah, well, that's another problem, okay.
As far as...
Got it. And then orient, the tables should be oriented to provide a clear, straight path to the children's walk-up window.
Yeah, yes, we could use delineators, you know, some sort of delineator, you know, cabling system to route lines so that they're not having to stand in line in the seating area. Is that sufficient?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
The line, but the line is not queued up through the tables.
Yeah, because you're going to basically be in the dining area when the kids are using the walk-up window.
We'll use delineators to...
Yeah, to provide a clear path from the entrance to the walk-up window. Would you like me to restate my motion so we can go back through this? No.
No, wait.
No, no, thanks.
Aren't you making, aren't you making a motion?
No, I'm going to make a new.
Yeah, would you make...
Okay, are you okay with these revisions to the conditions?
Yeah.
We'll give it another try. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve...
With conditions, right?
Yeah, to approve 25007 with revisions and revisions to the conditions of approval that we just stated.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, so this is to...
That was Commissioner Goldberg.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. May we have a vote?
I'm sorry. So this is to approve with the conditions applied?
Yeah, this is to approve...
So it's already been, here's what happened. It already happened, I guess it was a 3-3, 3-3 of an extension. It's already approved. But now what we're doing is we're adding additional requirements so that since it is approved, they need to do this to keep it approved. That's what we're voting for, is with conditions.
Well, it was a no action on the first vote. The motion on the table is to recommend approval with modified conditions as suggested by Chair Thienis, which includes security, making a solid barrier, consumption at the tables for alcohol, limiting the hours to commence at noon, and delineators to the walk-up window.
That's correct.
It would result in the same no action if it is a tie vote.
Let's give it a whirl. Can we have a vote, please?
The vote should have come up. Please let me know if it didn't. Commissioner Palmer? Okay, we have four ayes, three noes. Vice Chair Bush, Commissioners McKee and Palman voting no. Motion carries.
The Planning Commission's action on this item is final. An appeal is filed to the city council within 10 calendar days. An appeal must include the reasons for the appeal, the fee, and should be filed with the city clerk's office.
We do have one more item. The second item is on Talbert.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on the appeal of zoning administrator's approval of conditional use permit 25014. That's the facility on Talbert. Planning Commissioners, please state your disclosures regarding this item. We'll start at my right.
None. Actually, I did have one, the Councilwoman Vandermaat.
Mine are the same as the prior.
No discussion? I had the same disclosures.
Same disclosures.
Same disclosures.
And same disclosures.
And same disclosures as well.
Okay, and just to clarify for the public record, the same disclosures are the same Here we go again. Staff, maybe we have a staff report?
Yes, Associate Player Marco Cuevas will be giving the presentation once again.
Yes, thank you. So, yes, this item is to appeal to zoning administrator's approval of conditioning is permit 25-014. This is the second location, located at 7300 Talbert Street. There we go. So, this request is to permit the sale, service and conception of beer and wine. ABC type 41 license with the proposed approximately 5,200 square foot outdoor dining area for an eating and drinking establishment with full table service at the Huntington Beach Sports Complex. The project location has a general plan designation of OSP, Open Space Park, and is zoned OSPR, Open Spake Parks and Recreation. The site is located south of Talbert Avenue, facing the existing service parking lot, with the closest residences located over 2,000 feet to the northwest and southwest. The image on the slide here shows, area image on the right shows the location of where this, where this eating and drinking establishment is here on Talbert Street. The image to your left shows more of a close-up of the location of the actual eating and drinking establishment site. So, as I mentioned earlier, the site plan is approximately 5,200 square foot, and it includes the enclosed patio area with table service. It is to provide a 40-inch high barrier fencing, and restrooms would be accessible from the outside of the dining area. So, as part of our analysis, the zoning administrator approved conditioning is permit 25-14 with conditions at the meeting on July 16th, 2025, and was able to make certain findings, of which those include the police department conditions regulating alcohol sales and service, full table service, guests will be served food and beverage at their tables, and alcohol is ancillary to eating and drinking establishment. The site layout and design, the fencing is conditioned to prevent passing of alcoholic beverages through the barrier, and the plan is revised to provide restroom access to the public. Subsequently, this, an appeal was filed by Commissioner Palman on July 23rd, 2025, citing concerns that the plans that were presented were new plans and were received on the hearing date, and that the public questions were not up to the appellant's satisfaction. So, this is a site plan comparison. The plan to your left shows the previous site plan that was submitted. The plan to the right shows the areas where the barrier was, where the fencing was added and a barrier created. You'll see that those have the clouded areas there, so provides more of a secure dining patio environment, and also allows for outside access to the restrooms. This image is renderings of the proposed outdoor dining patio establishment, and it gives you a general look and feel of what the, what the outdoor dining patio area would So, should the planning commission approve the proposed project? It may do so based on the suggestions, suggested findings and conditions of approval, and that is that the project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, that it provides an enhanced amenity with the, within the Huntington Beach Sports Complex, that the uses ancillary to existing eating and drinking establishments and the Huntington Beach Sports Complex, and that the conditions of approval have been incorporated to ensure safe service of beer and wine and compliance with all applicable laws and regulations. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and once again, show that the applicant is in the audience as well to answer questions.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
Yep.
Starting on my right.
I'd like to make a motion.
We still need to open the public hearing, at least.
We have to have a deliberation. It just feels like deja vu, that's all.
It is.
Nothing's gonna change.
Okay, no questions for staff.
Levity here, come on.
Chair, I also do want to recognize that we do have Lieutenant Sean White and civilian investigator Vicki Adams from the police department during our public hearing.
Thank you for being here. Okay, with no further questions, we will now, oh, we do have questions.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Commissioner?
So, can we assume that as we proceed with this, the same conditions would apply?
Yeah, our motion would be, when we do make a motion, we will have the same.
Can I, can I ask a question? We threw around a provision of having security there. Obviously, this is gonna be proprietary security, and it's not gonna be under PPO. So, the standard's probably gonna be a little lower. Are we gonna have a police presence when alcohol's being served here?
You know, can I ask another, can I follow up on his question also? But isn't it my understanding that when there are large, when they know they're having the big tournaments, they do let, you know, PD know that they're having large crowds, so they're aware to be...
Well, isn't that why we have Officer White here?
As far as the sports complex goes, there's no officers that are assigned to that park. When there are large events, yes, they do request extra patrol checks by the officers that patrol that area. So, if this passes, and we don't have any intention to assign officers to the park just because alcohol's being sold there and served there, but again, we do maintain a presence through routine patrol of the, of the park and the surrounding areas as well.
Yeah, and so if a security guard had a problem with one of the participants not obeying the rules to get rid of the alcohol, they would just call the police department, and you would respond to that, wouldn't you?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we will, with no further questions, we'll now open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
So, everyone signed up for both sports complex items. I'm gonna call all the speakers. If you would like to speak still, please come down. Hank Madano, Rick Brown, Dan Hay, Ed Laird, Dion Cronkite, Jeannie Goodwin, Billy Maddox, Dave Chenault, Diana Phillips, Patricia Pappas, Eric Stein, Eva and Nancy Bukos. Please list your name before you speak.
My name is Dave Chenault, and I just wanted two points. What is the cup that was approved by the zoning admin? We're just adding additional conditions, right? So, this hearing is a new hearing, in essence, but I just want to be sure that when you guys did this motion, that it's gonna be all provisions that were previously approved in addition to the ones you did, right, just tonight? Just be very clear on that. The second one is that the police are here, and I'm so glad you are, thank you. There's two things I wanted to kind of understand more. One of the provisions is there's no outside advertisement allowed of the alcohol consumption at these, right? And the police have let these guys exist around that provision because their name includes the name Kraft Beer. So, I just want that to be very clear, that even though the cup provision says, you know, there's no external advertising of beer and that kind of a thing, wine, alcohol, their name says beer, so they have it on the outside of the building, but the police were okay with that, and I just wanted that to go on the record, that they knew about that, they okayed it. And then, the very last thing is that, one little twist on this is that when there's alcohol consumption and there's a violation like this, I've had experience with this, lived on Metal Arc, and when you see incidents like that, and I'd like to have you guys query the police a little bit, is that a misdemeanor? Is that a felony? And if it's a misdemeanor, does that mean that the police have to witness it to make any kind of action to enforce it? People are drinking out there, right? Do you guys have to see it to enforce it? And if that's the case? I'd like to have you guys ask them that, because if it's a security guard, and he just says, "Stop drinking," and they don't drink, and they come, if they don't see him drinking, what's the action they could take? I'm not sure. Thank you.
I can address that. Yes, it is a misdemeanor, it's a municipal code violation. If we do not witness it as law enforcement, we can have the private party sign a private person's arrest. I just, I figured I'd put it on the record regarding that facility, the sports complex itself. I have statistics here, since, I can go as far back as you need, but since the beginning of 2024, January 2024 till today's date, we've had 57 calls for service there, and zero have been alcohol-related. We've had, a majority of the calls there are either transient-related or 911 calls, traffic collisions, things of that sort. So, I made sure before we approved this, from the police standpoint, that we didn't have an existing problem that we were contributing to.
Okay, can I ask, so you didn't have any alcohol?
Guys, Lieutenant White, I know you love public speaking, but please wait till after public comments to, for you guys to ask questions of them specifically. We still have public comments going on.
Yeah, let's get through the public comments.
Is it my turn to jump in?
Next speaker, please, sorry.
My name is Dan Hay, and I just wanted to come up and clarify a few things. I honestly believe that the rationale by some of our planning commissioner folks sitting here behind the table, that people bring alcohol in anyway, so it's okay to do this, because I'm past president of many leagues, just like you are. I had four kids that attended Huntington Beach High School. All my relatives are coaches and teachers here in Huntington Beach. I was a former vice president of Fountain Valley Little League and vice president of junior miss softball. We've all, if we've lived in this town, like we all have for myself 65 years, we've done it all, especially if we've got a lot of kids that play sports. But, so I don't buy that rationale as a reason to approve this. My customer base, the 50,000 people I just brought into this town over the last 17 days, did not one of them request to me to say they're looking for alcohol in Huntington Beach at the sports complex. There is no clientele on the youth side of things that wants alcohol being served while their kids are playing sports. Now, I don't care how many adult events the owners want to hold there, and how many activities outside sports that adults come to, that they want to serve alcohol to. I'm, what, I'm not trying to keep, put them out of business, but my issue is youth sports. A 12-year-old girl or a 12-year-old boy has no business watching two parents, or a parent and a coach get in a fistfight out on a field because they went to the little Gardendale area that you see here in the sports complex, and they down six beers real fast because they were upset with the coach that making a play or didn't play their kids, and then goes back to field three and decides to get in an argument with the coach, or wait for the umpire to come off the field to beat the hell out of him. It happens. Don't tell me it doesn't. I've seen it, everyone here has seen it. So, and, so, anyway, that's, that's the extent of my comments. I just wanted to clarify a few things, that this, for me, has to do with youth, and I don't like seeing alcohol being served around my young ladies when they're out at the sports complex, or in Fountain Valley, or at the Great Park. And by the way, Chris Lama used to be the head of community services here. He's now over in Irvine. I texted him while we were up there. They don't serve alcohol at the Great Park. They've got one venue at the amphitheater live area that serves alcohol, but not in any of the other areas there, unless you're in probably one of those private suites up there in that baseball facility. I've been in there before, I was there when they opened up that complex, I spoke on the field on behalf of softball, and I didn't see alcohol being served. Chris didn't say it was being served in the complex, so if they are doing it, I correct myself, but I just texted him.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more speakers?
We have no one ready to speak.
Okay, we will, with no further speakers, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, now we will deliberate this item or...
I'd like to just call for the motion. We're gonna go ahead and cut to the chase like we did the last time, and just ask that we approve this request with all the stipulations that were discussed in the last motion that we made for the other location.
That would be 25007, the conditions that we added to the proposed conditions of approval, and I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Maybe we have a vote?
Should be.
Are we allowed to speak before we do this? Or are we not gonna do that part? Since I'm going down with the ship here, and I didn't get my motion, and I just don't understand why we're doing this on the back of children. I don't understand you guys' rationale to go along, to get along, is foolhardy. We're opening up Pandora's Box, and we have statistics that the police have presented, and now we're gonna, we're gonna be on the clock. And I just can't imagine telling your child that, "Watch me drink, watch me do it well." That's what you're doing. And, you know, I think we're gonna pay for it. We're in the public, we're representing the city, we're representing the youth, we're representing the future, and if this is the best we can do, we're gonna struggle. They can go anywhere else they want to after their games, they can go downtown, they can have their alcohol there, they can go anywhere they want, they can go to 7-Eleven, they can, you said they can bring it with them, but for us to condone it, I think it's a very bad look, and it's a black mark, and that's just my opinion.
And one more thing from me. My dad was a bus driver and drove 21 years that bus drunk. Every day, he drove drunk. With your rationale, if they served beer and wine on the bus, he's gonna do it anyway, you know? I would say we keep this away from the kids altogether. There's no reason why we should have beer, wine intermingled with kids' sports. I've seen so many incidents with coaches, with referees being threatened by sober parents when you inject drink into it. And also, there's one other thing, and that's the DUI rationale here. How many people bring their kids with a rideshare to their sporting events and stack all their kit in a rideshare's car? They don't. They bring their own SUVs or trucks, right? And then they drink, and that road on Golden West, man, that's, people drive up and down there like maniacs. It's like a freeway. So, I would say even for the police to be here saying, "Well, with stipulations, we'll allow it," is kind of asinine, really. And I'm just saying, if there's one DUI fatality on Golden West after we allow this, then it's, it's on our heads. That's all.
Well, I see it differently. I see that it is a controlled environment, I see it's an opportunity for us to do a better job to control the alcohol consumption, this, with the addition of a security guard, helping police the people who do drink in the park or in the, at the games. I believe it's, we've, with the additional conditions and the agreements, we've created a much better controlled environment that I hope helps control that behavior. I think, you know, I play golf, and every once in a while, after golf, you know, my buddy, golf, for some reason, people like to drink, and I never used to do it, and I, every once in a while, I'll go, "Okay." And then, I've got a breathalyzer, everybody should have a breathalyzer, I think, they should come with cars. And I'm out there with these junior golfers on the driving range, it's smoking hot, and I go, "You know, you guys have to be here, but you know what? I can't drive because I didn't pass my breathalyzer test, so I'm gonna hit balls with you guys for a while." And I think, you know, just saying, "Cut it off, keep, hide it from people," it's an unrealistic expectation, but to do it responsibly and teach children how to drink responsibly, I think is better than saying, you know, cold turkey, no. That's how I feel. That's how I feel.
I, oh, go ahead. I have a, we all received, I believe, a letter from a resident, since she's lived in Huntington Beach since 1978, and her comments were, in roughly the past week, July 7th through August 4th, 2025, the Huntington Beach Police Department made 38 alcohol arrests, related arrests, and 13 people were Huntington Beach residents, and 28 were from other cities. In July 2025, Huntington Beach had two DUI fatalities. The consumption of alcohol in sports leads to compromised motor skills, decreased coordination, delayed reaction, diminished judgment, impaired balance, and also increasing an athlete's risk for injury. She does not support alcohol consumption in this venue. And I, the other reason why I'm opposed to this is that I don't think we should experiment on our kids, and I view this as an experiment. I do not believe, you know, if, I can't have it on my conscience that if there's one fatality or one really bad incident, then it's going to be really bad, not only for how we vote on this, but also on the taxpayers, the residents, and that's who we represent. We represent, we're supposed to make the best decision we can, the safest decision we can, and responsibly, and that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Palmer?
So, you said you don't think we should have an experiment, but again, I'm Gumby on this. One of the things that I had thought about was doing a pilot and saying, "Well, if we're going to do this," which there's some reason to do it, "Maybe we do it for six months and then do an assessment." But we have two locations. I don't know how much strain it would put on the owners, developers, to open the one location and monitor that very, very carefully and leave the other one as is. So we've already passed the one, so I'm thinking that maybe we just pass the one.
So, it was kind of brought up, right, that we don't have to have alcohol here because we can go to Main Street, or we can go, you know, here, there, the pizza place, or all of that, right? So do you guys really think that they're going to take the kids home, and then the parents are going to go back and drink, or the kid's going to join them, you know, at the pizza place, at first-class pizza, or, you know, all of that? I mean, these are, these end up being social gatherings with the parents and the coaches and the, you know, the kids are off doing their thing, but, I mean, to think that this is going to make anything any worse from the kids being around the alcohol, I just, I don't see it. I really don't see it.
Well, I wouldn't want that either, but what I would say is I'm not going to condone it, and I'm not going to condone it with a vote here. So I wouldn't condone those kids going to a pizza place and their parents getting hammered there with them, but I'm definitely not going to condone it when I have a say in it. Does that make sense?
We're representing, we're representing the city. I think the city's best is not with this. But I would like to thank Tracy Pelman for appealing this. I just want to make that a point.
I'll second that.
You guys are welcome. And by the way, just to put it out there in full disclosure, I also appealed this to the state ABC board, because I was concerned that this board, that the city would not do the right thing, and at least there'd be another avenue. So thank you.
So I'm going to, one of the less popular people this evening, which is not the first time behind this dais as well, so it's okay, I'm getting used to it, exactly. But I will appeal, I will try to appeal to my commissioner to my right here. We did approve the first location. This is the same basic, I mean, it's just a different site, and I think putting undue, I think the, I think the operators have given everything they possibly can to give us a good conscience to vote in favor of this, and I would hope that you would allow the second location, because to put them and hinder them on one and not the other, business-wise, I think is just, anyway, I just, I hope that, I hope that the vote will go accordingly because we did approve the other one with conditions that I feel very strongly that will help mitigate a lot of the concerns expressed this evening.
I have another comment. The state ABC board basically has a, I guess a code, that basically says that there shall be, in a setting like this, there shall be no alcohol permits permitted next to playgrounds, tot playgrounds, and there's a youth shelter over by this one off of Talbot. There's also a library there. And so I just thought I would make you aware, because I don't think anybody thought to look at the state. Thank you.
To make me feel better, can I make a substitute motion?
Yeah, we have to, we already have a motion on the table.
Just checking. Asking for a friend?
Yeah, I agree. I think we should vote in favor the same way, because I don't think it would be economically feasible for them to operate one restaurant and still provide reasonable amount of security.
It would give us a much clearer picture of how it works before we put alcohol at both ends.
It's so vague, though. I mean, first of all, how many security guards are you going to have? Are they going to be on a PPO, or is it going to be a proprietary guard cards? I mean, it's so arbitrary.
That's why it's a conditional use permit. You know, if, it can be revoked.
Can I ask the city attorney a question? Am I allowed to make a substitute motion? I'm going to ask him, you're not the lawyer.
There's, the motion is on the floor to vote, but if, say it is approved, you can make, add additional conditions, you can make a motion, add additional conditions, and things like that. You can keep making motions till midnight.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you. May we have a vote, please?
Okay, we have three ayes, three nays, and one abstention. Commissioner, Vice Chair Bush, Commissioner McGee, and Commissioner Pelman voting nay. Commissioner Palmer abstaining. Motion fails.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay, is there anything on the consent calendar?
Okay, I'll make my substitute, I'll make my substitute motion since it got, it was basically a push. I would like to deny the, let me see, I want to deny item 25-634. I'd like to deny it.
I'll second.
I'm making a substitute since we're 3-3.
May I ask just to, because denial also needs to come with at least one finding, I guess I'll just summarize some of the information that was provided contrary to recommending approval.
So what are you asking me right now? Are you telling me or asking me?
You have to make a finding for denial, meaning reasons why you're recommending denial.
Right. It's really the same as the last time. I don't believe that it's being interpreted properly out of 612, the Charter 612. I think this should have gone to the city council instead of through us.
Okay, thank you. We can go ahead and vote.
I'm sorry, my melon's been twisted here. So yes and denial. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We're not used to staying up this late.
We have three ayes, three nays, and one abstention. Chair Athenis, Commissioner Babenow, and Commissioner Goldberg voting nay. Mr. Palmer abstaining. Motion fails.
Okay, I feel better now. I've done all that I can for the city of Huntington Beach.
So just to confirm, with the failed motions, the ZA's approval will stand.
You can add a motion to add conditions back if you'd like.
Yeah.
Approved without the modified conditions because that motion failed.
So you've taken away, you guys have taken away the modified conditions.
You took away the conditions. We got to, we got to vote. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, and I'm sorry, we're making a motion. Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, you go ahead.
So wait, wait, let me, let me explain what we just did, because it's already been approved through the zoning administrator and the design review. Before you do that, we just approved, we let it go without the conditions, so if we vote, we at least get the conditions.
Before you do that, I would like to make a condition on the last vote before you do this next vote. And my condition would be that there be no alcohol during youth sports. That would be my condition.
No, that would, we would have to, no, we're not going to do that.
If you made your motion, then we'd vote on that, and then if you want to make a second motion to add that, that would be the proper procedure.
Would we have to vote on that?
Can we make, can we make a motion?
We got to get a motion on the floor here. Yeah. Somebody make a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the conditions.
I will second that motion.
That is the conditions that were listed for the previous item that were approved?
Correct. The same conditions. So there's continuity between the two different facilities, I guess, if you will.
And please, point of order. If we don't vote yes on this, they're going to have the ability to sell alcohol based on a D to C.
Don't do that, Ben. I'm not voting for this no matter what. So you might say it's my fault, but I'm not going to vote for this at all.
It sounds like a discotheque might go into that one, but I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, so it's on your head, be it. If you want this, you can have it, but I'm not voting for it.
I second the motion.
Okay.
Can we have a vote, please, on our third try?
Yes, so yes is approving with the conditions, with the stipulations.
Okay, we have four ayes, three nays. Vice Chair Bush, Commissioners Pelman voting no. Motion passes.
Finally.
The planning commission's action on this item is final unless an appeal is filed to the city council within 10 calendar days. An appeal must include the reasons for the appeal, any required fee, and shall be filed with the city clerk's office within 10 calendar days.
So there's no consent calendar items, no non-public hearing items, and next on the agenda are planning items. Staff, can we have a report?
We anticipate canceling the August 12th planning commission meeting.
Okay, is that it? All right, before we close for the evening, planning commissioners, do you have any comments to provide? We'll start on my right.
Wait, say that again?
No, I've said all I want to say. Thank you.
Done.
I do have a question. Last meeting. Isn't that good? This would be a legal question. One of the commissioners brought up the fact that the zoning code was a guideline. Could you expound on that?
If you guys have questions on your duties and things like that, I'd really prefer to give those outside of open meeting. If you would like to, I think you're referring to the definition question you had last week. It was, I don't remember exactly what your question was, but yeah, the zoning code definitions, unless otherwise stated, which there are other definitions in the general plan and also in the code, would apply. But unless you're giving me a specific section to compare it to, I can't give you a guarantee of that. In general, yeah, the zoning code applies, and you guys are here selected to give your expertise on zoning and building codes and things like that.
So the question, the question specifically was, is it a guideline or is it a law? My understanding is the zoning and the municipal code is a law. If you are an infraction, you can receive a violation. So what I'm trying to do is clarify for the benefit of all of us that it's not a guideline and that it is a law.
It's a law, and like the laws of the United States, there are levels to that, and the charter's number one, Miss Code, zoning code, all that. Yeah, it's a law, definitely.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, as a commissioner that, I believe I made that statement?
Was it you?
I think two of us have made that statement. My indication was not that the code wasn't a law, but it can be used as a guideline in essence, that every project doesn't have to push the greatest extent of the code. That was my position.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Okay, well, that's the last item on the agenda. We're hereby adjourned to our next planning commission, which may be canceled, which is supposed to be August 12th, 2025. Meeting adjourned.